All right, good evening, everyone. It is six o'clock. We will call the Hudsonville Public Schools Board of Education Work Session for May twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four to order. All board members are present with the exception of Andrew DeWitt, who has an excuse to absence. First up, we'll do our pledge of allegiance to everyone who runs.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up is approval of our agenda. With motion, so who? Motion from Dawn.
Support.
Support from Nick. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposing, say no. First up is recognition of visitors and hearing of people present. One to make Jenna Bron.
Hello, I haven't made it to the last couple of meetings due to crazy sports schedule and, of course, my son's upcoming graduation. Despite him not attending HPS, I would like to thank all of those involved in the graduation planning. I cannot even fathom how crazy this last month has been for you all. And as a parent of a two thousand and twenty-four graduate, I thank you for your dedication to making this a core memory for all participants, which reminds me, I need to buy waterproof mascara. But back to the task at hand, at the bottom of today's agenda, it has board goals listed as a topic of discussion, and I'm excited to hear what goals our board members might be setting for themselves. One of the goals suggested by a community member at the last meeting was to focus on celebrating and honoring our teachers. And based on the SOAR V data, unfortunately, that is a space for development. Also, all of our board members, except for one, was able to attend teacher appreciation events, so thank you for that. Instead, Mark spent the day at the polls volunteering to help with the village election. Also, thank you for that. Thank you to all of our board members and our superintendent for helping promote the village and our schools. But before I finish my public comment, I would like to say one thing from the end of last meeting's roundtable. If you can imagine, please think about how you would feel if I came before you all now and shared personal information about a board member without their consent. How would that make you feel? What if, offhandedly, I reported to the county clerk that Mark Davis was joking about election tampering and influencing voters while he was volunteering at the polls? Mark, no means no. And perhaps you're not used to hearing that, so I'll repeat it to you again. No means no. Your actions were inappropriate and unprofessional at the end of last meeting's roundtable, and to quote Taylor Swift's boyfriend's teammate, "You should stay in your own lane." Barb, as president, if you haven't already, I'm expecting you to address his comments and assure our administration and our teachers that Mark will not share personal information or abuse his power. Lastly, June is Pride Month, so that's exciting. I look forward to seeing board members and administrators wearing pride pins or supporting our LGBTQIA students in another way. Please let me know if you need any swag. Thank you.
First up is our discussion items, and the first one is our professional learning communities.
So we've talked at length about professional learning communities. As a board, obviously as an administrative team, we'd like to share some, just kind of do a refresher with some of the PLC work that has taken place, and then talk about some of the excitement for next school year and how we can continue this extremely important work. So Amy and Kathy will go first.
So just starting from the big picture, we have some strategic planning goals, which, as you know, we use data to arrive at. There's four goals that you see listed up here. Under long term, we have explore increased opportunities for struggling students, investigate increased opportunities for advanced learners, and then under ongoing, it's really around our professional learning communities work and our multi-tiered systems of support work as well as professional learning. So this is really an update on some of the journey as well as where we would like to go next with some of this work as it connects to our strategic plan. So what is a professional learning community? We'll probably toggle back and forth between saying professional learning community and PLC. But a PLC is a process, is the process of member, excuse me, let me start over. The PLC process is a never-ending process in which educators commit to working together to ensure higher levels of learning for every student. Certainly, that aligns with our mission statement and certainly back to our strategic planning goals. Really, within a professional learning community, collaborative teams. So let me give you an example from the high school English department. They operate as a department, but they also have then collaborative teams with each of, within each of those departments. So there might be a small team of teachers as part of the ELA department that also function as a collaborative team because they teach the same course. So they might teach TOEFL, for example, and if Kathy and I are on that TOEFL team, we would be considered a collaborative team. And the primary function of a collaborative team is really to work in this inquiry-based model around four guiding questions. The first question is, what should students know and be able to do? And to ensure, using that example, that Kathy and I are crystal clear on exactly what we need students to know and be able to do within our TOEFL course. And then how will we assess progress towards mastery? And what does proficiency look like? And agreed upon within our collaborative team that this is what proficiency looks like, as well as then moving on to when we identify students who have not mastered that particular standard or skill, how will we respond when students are struggling? Whether that be responsibly tomorrow in our class because of formative assessment that we gave today, or as part of seminar, or WIN, or FLACs, is what we also call it at the middle school level. But then for teachers to be able to request students to say, these students need additional support and time for learning and mastering this skill. Or question four, how will we respond when students excel? And so that, those are the four guiding questions that really are at the heart of what a collaborative team does with their time together.
All right, so as we consider the why of PLC, we're going to take a few moments to reflect on the research that has anchored our vision and work in PLC. So Amy might have mentioned John Hattie before in the previous presentation, but just as a reminder, he is a prominent education researcher who has conducted a meta-analysis, including hundreds of studies with over eighty million students. And in that study, or in those studies, he worked to determine effect sizes for one hundred and ninety-five influences on student achievement. And he uses this barometer to measure it. So the higher the effect size, the greater impact it has on student achievement. The hinge point that he calls it is at point four, so anything above point four is a zone of desired effect. So he ranked one hundred and ninety-five influences with these effect sizes, whatever assignment that they have done, and the effect sizes. Okay, go ahead and go to the next slide. It's okay. So the winner, so to speak, out of those one hundred and ninety-five was collective teacher efficacy. And you can see the hinge point there is point four, and it had an effect size of one point five seven. So it blew the needle off the barometer and really has shown to have a high impact on student achievement. So what is collective efficacy? So specifically, it is the combined belief that it is the teachers that cause the learning, combined with the action of working together and fed with the evidence that through their actions, they are impacting student learning. It is through teachers reflecting on teaching, practice, and implementing plans to positively impact student learning that collective efficacy is developed and realized. Collective efficacy is what's happening on our collaborative teams when they're engaging in the professional learning process. So they are working through the questions that Amy just detailed, and they're having these types of conversations. They are developing collective teacher efficacy. So we know that it's powerful for students based on Hattie's research, but we also know that it's really supportive of teachers. Teaching can feel like you're in silos sometimes. It can feel pretty lonely at times. There has been, a couple of years ago, an article in Education Week about teacher retention, where it indicated that forty-four percent of teachers were considering leaving the profession in the next two years, which is scary. You're looking at, yeah, scary. So, but, but if it was less lonely, if I were a part of a collaborative team engaging in the professional learning community processes, really developing our collective teacher efficacy as we do that, I would feel less lonely. I might just stay. So it's powerful for students and student achievement, but also very supportive for teachers.
So the professional learning communities journey had started a couple of years ago. Quite honestly, in Hudsonville, there has been previous work prior to me arriving around professional learning communities. Professional learning communities work through an organization called Solution Tree has been around for decades. I've attended multiple in my career as a teacher, as a building-level leader, and then certainly in my role as an assistant superintendent, attended multiple professional learning opportunities around what professional learning communities look like and sound like and feel like, all the details about how to make them run. However, pre-COVID, there was some desire by teacher leaders and administrators to kind of pick some of that work back up, if you will. And of course, that was shut down. It was literally the spring of COVID that it was shut down. And so we lifted that back up in the summer of two thousand and twenty-two with thirty administrators and teachers going to a conference in Grand Rapids and felt very inspired and all of the things that Kathy just mentioned with regard to, none of us as educators can do this work alone. We have to lean on each other and the knowledge and experience that each of us bring to the table. And so that then really launched us into utilizing our time in two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three school year on early release days to dive into what this might look like and explore that with teachers and the teacher leaders and administrators who are passionate about trying to pick this work back up and what does that mean. This is complex work, and quite honestly, it's happening around the county. So Grand Haven, Genesee, multiple districts in our area are engaging in this work. And as, as administrators and myself were grappling and trying to lead this important work, we started reaching out to other districts, right? That's how we collaborate in Ottawa County. It's a beautiful thing. Like, what does this look like for you? Some of those districts were utilizing consultants from Solution Tree, which is the organization that really provides a lot of professional learning around this. And they were utilizing consultants to come into districts and support teachers and administrators because we're all learners. We can't possibly all know all things, right? And so creating that opportunity then was really the vision for this year. So that was developed throughout last year, started some of the work, but knew that this is a heavy lift if we want to, what they call it really is moving from PLC light to PLC right. So not just saying you're a professional learning community and kind of doing the work, but like really doing the work and what does that mean? So we've been consulting this year with a gentleman named Josh Ray, who has been providing not only support on early release days in the morning for administrators and teacher leaders, kind of prepping us for those afternoons and guiding us and answering questions. He actually has experience, he's from Arkansas, and he has experience in, at multiple levels, elementary, middle school, and high school as an administrator, and has led this work with some pretty profound student achievement outcomes and a real short turnaround. And so he has been a great addition to the dialogue and learning that we've been doing as a team. Throughout this year, though, and even at the beginning of the year, teachers continued and administrators continued to say, early release time for this learning is great, but really to work the inquiry cycle, going from a month and us looking at formative assessment data about what students did or knew or didn't know the last time we assessed, and not needing for another month is not nearly the responsiveness that we want or need to ensure that our students are making progress towards the standards that we want them to, that we want them to master. So there continued to be this, this tone and wish for more time. How do we get more time to do this work? And so an additional piece of the professional learning community journey, we took a group to Ally Stevenson, which is in Illinois. We took a group of fifteen teachers and administrators to really a fishbowl experience where we were able to collaborate with teachers in another district in Illinois, which is really the founding school where this work was developed. Quite honestly, they've been doing it for twenty-five plus years, and they say it's still a work in progress. And so it was a great opportunity for us to continue to learn alongside others. And really, two of the biggest takeaways were really about teachers not working in a silo. Some of our high, our high school teachers in particular felt super passionate that in a high school our size, like this work just makes sense because sometimes colleagues don't even see each other because they're in different parts of the building. And so how do we build in that intentional time to do this work meaningfully for that human connection, aside from the workload that we have as teachers to ensure all kids are successful? And then finally, that leads into the all means all. That was the additional takeaway. Like, we really do mean all means all. All students deserve to have our very best as teachers and from our teacher teams each and every day. And so how do we create space and time for teachers to tend to that while really ensuring that we support every student in every way that we can, whether that's with intervention, supports, or extension opportunities as well? Specifically, this journey has really been with secondary teachers in particular. At the elementary level, a lot of this work has happened quite organically because of the multi-tiered systems of support that happens. They've been providing that intervention time on a regular basis for many years. And so the additional caveat to that is we also are adopting a new math curriculum and really trying to manage that teacher capacity so we don't have forty-four percent of our teachers leaving. And just knowing that there's a lot of heavy lifts that teachers do. Some of our teachers are very interested in doing some of this learning, but also trying to manage that with a lot of the other things that we've been focusing on from a teaching and learning perspective at the elementary level.
So that said, we've been working very closely with the AAN and the EGA, Amy, the department leaders from the secondary level. That is our biggest challenge. I was a middle school teacher back in the day and we had teaming, which means every day I met with a team. We don't have that structure, and quite frankly, that's a major undertaking to play at the middle school level, but the middle school also. So we're going to allocate two times a month on Wednesdays for our secondary teachers to get together. We bring this out as kind of a pilot idea of what this would look like. And one of the first comments that we asked our teachers, by prioritizing these two times a month, tell me what else you want to know, and they, they want us to know that that's, there's not enough time. So, but it's a start, right? It's a start to build consistency, to build, really to talk about the importance of this work on a consistent basis. Meeting once a month or every other month based on our early release days just wasn't getting the consistency with our teachers that they really need. By the time they're getting together, a unit might be over. They don't have a chance to talk about the unit, to reteach or teach. Some kids already know it. Some kids don't. A lot of times, we teach to the kids that are in the middle, and now we're trying to teach to both ends, make sure we get everybody. So we're setting up times right now. We're looking at two Wednesdays a month. Transportation will look the same at this point as we're working through it. So the kids will still come to school and go home at the same time. But our teachers, when they, at the end of the day, if they're released a little bit early, the kids, some kids would go home, some would stay at school being supervised, and then they would go home as we work through this work. I think long-term solution, we would like to do something similar to several districts in the area where maybe, maybe we do this more on a regular basis, and maybe our half-days aren't as impactful if we do it on a regular basis, that we don't have half-days every month, and maybe we do those every other month. So instead of thirteen half-days, maybe we go to six or seven half-days and then do this work on a regular basis. So we're gonna, we're gonna give this a shot in the fall. We feel very confident. We've had very long conversations with our principals about what this looks like. With our staff, our staff is excited that they're going to be able to do this work, quite frankly, with fidelity on those every other, you know, twice a month. And going from there. So wanted to share that with the board, what questions you might have regarding not only the PLC work is, which I think Amy and Kathy laid out in detail, all the work that's gone into this, but then what this looks like for our teachers and our students moving forward. It's a question.
So can you talk a little bit about, so thanks for the update. Really good and informative. And the why in terms of improved teacher efficacy across teachers is clear. Can you provide a little, let me see. Can you provide a bit of a case study in terms of, okay, today we do this, in the future, and in the future, maybe two years, I don't know. But a target state, a 2B state would look like this. Here's how you'd see a difference in terms of not student achievement, but in terms of teacher interaction.
Teacher interaction?
Yeah.
Would be regular team meetings, really leaning back to the four guiding questions about a lot of clarity around exactly what it is students need to know and be able to do. High conversation and dialogue, which has already started around rigor, and what does proficiency look like? So teachers are even rewriting some assessments in order to ensure the rigor is there that matches really what we want students to be able to know and be able to do on state assessments and SATs, and really to be life-ready, if you will, outside of the classroom. From a structural perspective, as Dr. Vanderjek said, it could look like weekly meetings where as part of their, their weekly work, they are meeting in collaborative teams, diving into this and providing additional supports and extensions for students who meet them. Did that answer your question?
Yes, yeah, and then maybe a little deeper on, and that's by, by curriculum. It's by grade. It's by wherever we decide the collaboration needs to occur.
Absolutely.
Because we're seeing the data is telling us we have the absolute performance.
Absolutely.
Okay, so we're going to inform this, this sort of a collective collaborative team over here and this one over here.
Yes.
And follow the data and see what the data tells us.
Follow the data, see what the data tells us. I would also add that part of the survey that Dr. Vanderjek mentioned also asked a question of all of our staff in May. So we had a hundred and seventy-nine high, secondary staff responding, basically sharing that they wanted additional learning around those high-leverage instructional practice, practices, which is also some of John Hattie's work. And so there's an opportunity for reflection based on the data, adjustments to instruction, continued learning. I did this, that worked. Oh, I tried that, that didn't work. That comes into that collective efficacy piece. So it's constant review of data and adjusting to meet students' needs with the support of a collaborative team, not just me doing it all by myself.
And on a consistent basis. I mean, some people do it innately because you have a teaching, or a friend that might teach it. You might talk the whole time. And to build this in so that now there's an expectation and we can drive these conversations. There's a whole list of, here's what you talk about in your collaborative team, and here's what you don't. It's not.
Just sit together and have coffee.
Yeah, it's not, hey, how was your night last night? These are, these are intentional conversations, structured in such a way that it's not like, hey, I gotta take off and go do, nope. This is what we're doing right now. This is the work we're doing.
So in some respects, it's almost like a little bit of mentoring then as well. And when I think about where our staff is as far as ages and degrees of teaching and how often they've done it, the thing that really excites me is sort of that cross-age connection. Because as, as, you know, as you get more used to it and you're used to teaching with this other math teacher, and then ten years from now, you've got these different teachers who have different ideas. The fact that then they can pick the best of all of these options, I think that's phenomenal.
Superpowerful.
It's the both ends, right? It's the experience of me being here, but it's also the, hey, what about this? Where it's like, the new one, the new kid coming in, I've got some great ideas.
Exactly.
And it's all data-informed. So looking at all of the data, I'm like, what are you doing? Like, your kids, like, nailed that. So what, how did you teach that? And it's a great thing.
What kind of data would inform that? I'm sure there's a range. I know there's not one set of data, but what would be some examples of data?
Formative assessments, so like quick checks on understanding, like daily along the way. And then when you come together, you look at your formative assessment data to see how your kids did. And then you have those conversations with other teachers, but also you create a plan of action. Okay, these kids are far from proficient. What do we need to do for them? And when might we do that? And these kids are advanced, and how might we extend their learning around this standard? And then the kids are making.
And this also is, you take the RAN stuff, you look at the data, this is ongoing.
It's ongoing.
Kathy and Amy, I think this is wonderful. I'm glad to see that you're doing this. We have learning communities where I work. And it's great that they're structured because they need to be structured, but they can be wonderful. And I would do it with the teachers. Boy, if they could be weekly, it would be wonderful.
We are, we're structured with some time, and I think that's what the challenge has been, working closely with our, our constraints of our agreement. And they've been great working through it because you've got, you've got those that are looking at that structure, and others are like, but we need more, we need more, and we also want to be cognizant of the time in the classroom. So you, you can't just meet all the time and expect the kids to learn on their own. So we've got that balance. And I think we have some great ideas moving forward, and it gives us some time to, to try this out. We're looking at the end of the day from a structure standpoint, primarily because, quite frankly, at the end of the day, sometimes kids leave early for sporting events sometimes. It's like, okay, that's, we can do it then, and we have staff, they're already there. So we're working through some of those structures. We have some hurdles we're working through with our partners from the Christian School because we have transportation that we're trying to work through, but no, I, I think our secondary administrators have some great ideas of how to make sure the kids are in a good spot too. It's exciting.
All right, next up, we have our sex education advisory board, new board members.
Yes, so in your packet today, we shift gears real quick here. In your packet today, you have a rubric that hopefully looks familiar to you. The rubric was used as a means on the heels of a, a meeting to reboot our sex ed advisory board. So this is the Hudsonville Public Schools Rubric for Application to Serve on the Sex Ed Advisory Board. That rubric, we had a, a member from our sex ed advisory board who notified us just after, I think it was maybe February-ish, that, that she needed to step away. And so we needed to work through a process to identify a, a like partner, if you will, to join the sex ed advisory board. So we utilized this rubric, once again, to complete on the member who left so that we could calibrate. We also looked at demographics of the individual who was leaving because there was also intentionality when we did a reboot of our sex ed advisory board, that we had north side of the district, south side of the district, elementary, middle school, high school parents, all of the demographics within our district represented. So we completed this rubric on the member who left. And then we also took a look at all of those who had applied in February of two thousand and twenty-three and had expressed interest. And so then we found the demographics. It was a south side parent with upper elementary, middle school age parents. We completed the rubric on individuals who fit that demographic and then found a member who really matched very closely the responses to the survey questions. So we felt very confident that this was going to not create any imbalance of ideas and perspectives. We were very intentional about that when we built the committee, and so based on the questions. And so we did last week as a sex ed advisory board. We will be making a formal recommendation to all of you to accept the recommendation from the sex ed advisory board to add Joel Amal, who is in the audience here this evening. Do you want to just say hello and tell us about your kids and where you live?
Yeah, good evening. I live on Thirty Second, basically at Ogin, so just inside the school district. My kids are fifth grade and first grade at Forest Grove. So my daughter is the oldest, and she's headed into the middle school next year, so very exciting.
He has graciously accepted the invitation, and then the board will be bringing formal recommendations to all of you to add Joel to our sex ed advisory board at our junior court.
He weren't lying. He's at south side of the district.
Yeah, there's like three houses between me and the lawn.
Joe or Joel?
Joel.
Joel, okay.
So Joel, can you tell us a little bit about your background or why this interested you back in February two thousand and twenty-three when you applied?
Yeah, yeah, I'm West Michigan native. I graduated from Genesee. Went to school up at Michigan Tech, got a degree in computer science. I write software for a living. Lived in northern Virginia for eight years, and then may move back to this area and specifically Hudsonville because primarily of schools. So, yeah. I wanted to just have a voice in, you know, while my kids were learning and, yeah, that's why I had filled out the thing and the survey and why I'm participating.
Hey, thank you very much.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Any questions about the process or any questions you want to share? Right, next up is our school nursing program.
So I want to give you a quick update on our nursing program. Years ago, we did not have nursing support. So I wanna give you a quick update on our nursing program. Years ago, we did not have nursing support in the district. We've talked about that at length for years. We've worked with Spectrum now Corwell in their nursing program and have employed one point six FTEs, so two people, one's full time, one's three days a week, providing supports for our buildings. Our true triage people are administrative assistants. But from a legal standpoint, having nurses in the district is just very important when it comes to medical plans for students, consistencies with reports, just a lot of factors. However, and we'll tell you, the administrative oversight costs continue to increase. So we would like to take the nursing program and bring it under Hudsonville Public Schools versus through Corwell. I did speak with a former board member that was instrumental in starting this because I didn't want this to be like, hey, we've done this without communicating at all. And he said, no, it makes complete sense. It saves us about sixteen thousand dollars a year. The biggest challenge, in all honesty, is if somebody leaves, then we have to post a position and find somebody. But have all the confidence in the world, obviously, and Mrs. Armstrong and the work she does from an HR standpoint. Now that we have a system in place, we have expectations, our buildings know what to expect, we recall, it's different now that we have this in place. Meeting with, this was truly something I think they wanted because they have a commitment to Hudsonville Public Schools and they don't wanna be bounced all over. They wanna be here all the time. So we've worked very closely. We're continuing to work with them and trying to finalize what we consider our contract. Do you remember the conversation about our OCSN, the Ottawa County Schools Network, which buzzed through United Way, via the ISD? They're like, we're done with it. So we had to take it on ourself. This is something very similar. So now we control not only the contracts, but any kind of salary increases or not, the timing, the expectations. They would collect data for the school system like they have done, but they don't have to collect data for outside organization, which takes a lot of time, a lot of third time. So this is something I think we're excited about. It's been a journey. I think we've been working on this for probably four to six months. And we're getting to the point where I said, okay, I think we're ready to go now. I did let Corwell know that we are having these conversations as a district. And I would let them know our plan by June one. So unless, I wanna entertain questions. We looked at a whole series of what can they do now and what can they do next? And it all boiled down to inhalers. And that all changes because the law is gonna change anyway when it comes to who can carry, quote unquote, a generic or an extra inhaler. In the past, they always could, but our buildings just couldn't carry an extra one. So a lot of those are changing. So when you talk about stop the lead kids, just talk about training for staff, CPR, first aid, all of those conversations, Narcan training. When you look at insulin shot, all of those trainings can still be in place. They're still certified, the expectation to stay certified. And, you know, there's a network of them that they rely on and it doesn't, with all due respect to our healthcare providers, their network is based on the people they communicate with, not kind of people at the top. So you have Genesee who does their own, Grand Haven, Rockford, that's their network. Their network isn't, oh, I can't talk to that person because they're not part of Corwell. They talk a lot about these things. So that's our plan.
So contractor, we kind of like support staff contractor, not under any other special grouping of people that we have to fulfill certain contract requirements other than what we would state in the initial contract?
That's correct. So they would support our students, right, and staff. I mean, they're not gonna be giving me an insulin shot or taking stitches out of a toe that I might have cut, but they're going to provide support services for our students. They will fall under, they'll still report to Mandy Thomas, which they have in the past. And that structure looks the same from a contractual standpoint. It looks like the number of days, so it looks different. I mean, snow days might look different because they might have to come in to do some things. Or not, depending on the time of year and everything going on. But if you look at them, I would say closer to maybe a middle school principal's schedule because of when they have to come in to start the school year, how they just finish up the school year. But they're a year-round employee, just not working all summer, if that makes sense.
How do we compare one point six FTEs to other similar sized districts in the area?
I don't know. We had zero years ago. We went to one and then we, when the one wanted to go to point six, we added another one. I feel, based on conversations with them, that that is a good amount. Their heavy lift truly is to start the school year. The medical plans that are all new across, and you have nine hundred special ed students, right? So their medical plans, just getting those up and running, training and so forth is very busy to start the year. I came from a district a little bit larger, maybe a thousand more kids. We had one for the longest time and then when they were starting to wind down, we hired another one so that we didn't have a lapse in service. We did it. And I think they're still running with one right now. Some have two. A lot of it's based on the structure. So it's not, a lot of time to look at ratios when it comes to school counselors, as an example. How many kids do you have? How many counselors do you have? And it's not that simple because for them, it could be about medical plans. If you have, you know, two students that require trakes, it looks a lot different than if you have zero. That's a big shift in one-on-one care, support, triage, all those things. So that does not answer your question.
No, I didn't.
I was just saying that it's really there. There are many districts that don't have a nurse at all. There are some districts, and I'll just pick on Kemble Hills. Kemble Hills has a nurse in every building, every building. And they have like three or four elementarys, like one middle and one high school. I guess the question I have, Dr. Vanderjek, is will Mandy take responsibility then for any license for changes? Like checking the LARA website and like?
Yeah, so they're required to have their licenses up to date going from there. So that's part of the job description, what they're doing. So traditionally, that would be through Corwell, but that goes through, they don't maintain, it'd be similar to a teacher not maintaining their licenses.
So making sure that you have a copy of their license every year.
Yeah.
And then checking LARA to see if there's any restrictions on their license because you don't know if they moonlight. So that's like another big issue. Like in the hospital, you're required every renewal to check.
There's a three-year process through MBE to be a licensed nurse. I'm kind of mirroring off what Grand Haven and Genesee have done. I've talked to them a lot about it. So they said it's kind of a lot of, you know, upfront work over the next three years that will probably be a little bit of more, you know, F W. And then it kind of turns into what we have as administrators and teachers where it's a four year that they have to renew. And so, yeah, I've been looking into that.
Target the third.
July one. Technically August, but contractually they'll break service with Corwell. Once we tell them. You're on camera, so.
They watch, they know. But I mean, this is a conversation that we still have to have. We still have to settle on a contract and those kind of things. If we're unsuccessful, then I might very well come back in a month and say, okay, give it another year, we'll try to do it again. Right now, I think it's the best, not only move for our district, it's about Hudsonville, it's about our kids.
You got it.
Any other questions on the school nursing program? All right, moving on to the high school CAD lab, PC and monitor purchase recommendation. Mr. Graves?
Thank you. So this is pretty simple AG equipment. It's part of our long-term technology plan. Some of the recommendation, we're asking for purchase of monitors and workstations from people-driven technology in about sixty-six thousand five hundred forty-nine dollars. It will be, if approved, it will be funded by bond funds. They were purchased in two thousand and sixteen. We recycle everything. If we can find another place in the building that needs it, we'll use it somewhere else or use it somewhere else in the district. In terms of our procurement requirements, it's written in the state law that if you meet the, you can just go buy computers or equipment off the state M I deal contract. You've met your purchasing requirements, you're done. That we can get better pricing through the statewide RMC bid. So we use that contract. And it syncs up a little better with our, with the rest of the equipment we have in the district. So, yeah, that's it. Monitors and workstations for a total of sixty-six thousand five hundred forty-nine dollars. Any questions? Pat, talk about people-driven technology for just a moment. You can go up to Dell and order, I'm not suggesting to do this, but order monitors directly. So what do they, I'm not questioning what we're doing, I'm just asking out of for understanding, what are they, I mean? Yeah, as opposed to doing Dell Direct. Yeah, or, yeah, yeah. Yeah, we do buy, because it's really the only way to buy, we purchase that way from Apple. And we have, since I've done it before in Hudsonville, I have purchased directly, recommended purchasing directly from Dell. And there are just certain situations where it's a better deal to go through, you know, through a vendor, through a reseller. So, yeah, Jeff checks that. If you remember, we did the last real tense server work, we did Dell Direct and we had some issues and it was more on the technical specifications, speaking to them. It just worked better, it worked better just to have a local rep versus the deal with big company. Lay up with setup of the machines and setup of the school, the way and configuration of the machines. People-driven? Yeah. No, we'll do that. We'll do that. And these are desktops. I mean, it's different. We did have them more, like I said, that other purchase, we did more. It was a little more engineering specific, but these are things we can handle with our own tech department. I'd imagine if you're buying five hundred, maybe a different, math might be different on that. But for this amount, it just makes sense to go through, you know, somewhat more local.
Any other questions? All right, Dr. Vanderjek, policy update.
Policy updates. We have several policies for our spring update from Neola. Many of them are language clean-up. I'll try to go through them in reasonable fashion. Please ask questions as we go through if you have questions. I'll start with the first policy is fourteen, or twelve forty, superintendent evaluation. All of that language is per the language that was changed, similar to the teacher evaluation process. So all that language has changed. Some of the language does impact by like the field process, all of that, which has been of the teachers now is all superintendent. This falls in line with what's from the state. Maybe, Dr. Hooper, you wanna talk about the other now since we're talking about kind of?
Right, good idea.
All right, so this is the policy. This has nothing to do with the next topic, so I'm going not off policy, but later we were gonna discuss what's called raider reliability. Raider reliability is the people that rate people, making sure they're doing it and it's reliable. The difference between reliability and validity are different. Reliability means that you're making sure that you're assessing the right, the things that you're saying you're going to assess. So with that, all of our administrators have to go through raider reliability because they evaluate teachers. All of our central, not all of our central office, some of our central office, Pat's off the hook. Some of our, everybody else in our central office has to go through a different set of raider reliability because we evaluate administrators. So I evaluate central office, Amy and Anne evaluate building level administrators. And then two of our very special central office administrators get to go through another raider reliability because they get to also evaluate some teachers. So Amy and Mandy evaluate teachers also. So they have to go through a different set. On top of that, our board of education gets to go through raider reliability for my evaluation. So this is new, I'm gonna say this, another unfunded mandate from our legislation. Because there is a cost to all of these trainings to go through. For the board to go through it, it is recommended by MASB, who is also the governing body that oversees the evaluation. It's also the institution that we are paying to run this raider reliability, that we go through it through them collectively. Now, Barbara and I and Nick's had some conversations, but Barbara may have some conversations. I, it's all over the board in what other districts are doing. Some are like, we don't care, we're not doing it. Some are like, we'll do it on our own when we need to. Some are looking at and say, listen, we're gonna wait till we have to evaluate our superintendent and then we're gonna go through it to make sure we have the right board there because who knows what the board looks like in a year, two, five, whatever it is. Anyway, it is recommended by MASB. Again, they are the ones that we're paying to do this, to do this as a board. They do have one-offs, online version. I emailed the board in board briefs last week that there is one on June fifth in the evening. There's a couple others that are out there. That was one that was just coming up. It is not an environment in which all seven of you need to be on your computers from six to nine to know that Ken's in the same room with Greg and with Nick. It's, you're on your own. It's an online version, it's a webinar. Another option, one option though, is for us to bring somebody in to meet with the board and go through raider reliability. You've done this before with the evaluation trainings. The evaluation document is changing. They have not released the document because they don't wanna confuse it with the current document that's out there. Because some superintendents have until June thirtieth to be evaluated during a school year. Most are calendar years, some are school years. I'm going all over the place with this. The bottom line is, as a board, do you want me to try to schedule a training on July?
So the issue is for the board. I think everyone received the email from Jay Bennett. So we're required to have this training done by September first. So I reached out to MASB to ask, you know, like, is Ottawa area intermediate school district gonna offer like some sessions? Because it's summer now and people are busy during the summer and they have vacations and stuff and it's harder to get everyone together. They had not heard from Ottawa area and their recommendation was for us to schedule something and to have a consultant come in to do it. And if we, so then there's the cost. So then they have three online training dates, June fifth, June eighteenth, and July sixteenth. It is covering the new evaluation instrument, but they said those are really for people who do not attend your overall board training. Because Dr. Vanderjek and I have taught, it's expensive if we bring someone in. Dr. Vanderjek should pay at least a thousand.
Usually.
Plus their mileage, if they have to have food. If we only have five board members here, then we have to pay for those other two board members to do the virtual training. The virtual training is, was it eighty-nine or ninety-nine dollars? I forget when I looked at it.
Eight hundred.
Ninety-nine? You know, so, you know, so like, what would you guys rather do? Have someone come in and we try to find a date, we try to find a consultant, or do we attend one of these online sessions?
So what happens, I mean, what did they say for districts who haven't? Well, again, depending on their language, the whole, okay, they've been effective or highly effective for so many years. Under the old system, you could say, okay, we're gonna wait another year to do evaluation. My understanding is they also have something similar to that here.
The law, that law hasn't changed.
And so you can do the carryover, right? Part of my concern is what happens then when you get new board members on? So we have an election coming up in November. If we all do this training, and does it even make sense to do that training if the next evaluation may or may not happen at that point in time?
Question and to give you an update on that. So potentially two new board members, don't know what will happen. But theoretically, they should probably excuse themselves from the evaluation if they've ever been here. Whether they do or not doesn't matter. Um, but I was talking with Dr. Vanderjeck and Nick and I have talked, and there's no reason, Dr. Vanderjeck was highly effective. We don't see a reason, and I think the board would support this, to do the full evaluation again. Dr. Vander, Dr. Vanderjeck and I have talked about, you know, yes, he would evaluate his goals and he has, like, he has five goals. We evaluate those and then the board, in collaboration with Dr. Vanderjeck, would develop new goals. But we wouldn't do a, of the big formal evaluation this year.
So do we have the option then of waiting to do this training until we are doing an evaluation? For a couple of reasons. Number one, for recall of all of us, it's like, gosh, I don't remember how that went. And who knows whether some things changed because some people said this didn't work. And then you will have acclimated two new potentially board members.
Per N A S B, we're supposed to have it done by September first. So Nick and I, do you want to give this?
Even if you're not doing an evaluation.
We're back to, sort of, she's a hundred percent right. I had this conversation with her also, and like, I'm like, that makes no sense. So like.
I know, especially, I mean, every district is facing elections in November of some sort. You know, you're, we're on this.
Most of the, most of the districts I've spoken to in the area are not going through this with their board unless their superintendent is out for evaluation and they will do it by, the, the only argument N A S B had was if the board changed their mind in September, now you haven't been trained to do an evaluation.
Well, there's, there's no, I mean, I hear the N A S B says you have to do it by September one, but that's not legal requirement. It's a guidance from N A S B, um, they have it done by September one. So that to Don's point, um, if we're seeing, and I appreciate the position of, we don't need to do a full evaluation this year. Um, and we have new board members, um, and it sounds like other districts are already there. We're not going to do it by September one, it makes no sense to do it by September one. And that's guidance, but now, there's no, there's nothing in the legislation that I've read that says thou shalt have.
There is for the teachers. I don't know about superintendents.
It's been a little gray. Yeah, it's, it's, it's gray. Again, with two compliant people here that I had, they're really telling us to do this. That's why we're like leaning towards where they're, they're providing all this. But yeah, realistically, we're not scheduled to do an eval for eighteen months from now, but.
Yeah, and I, I think the one thing I would ask is that, I think the raider reliability, if we don't do it by September one and, and it's not a major ordeal, it probably should take place very early in two thousand and twenty-five. Because the raider reliability shouldn't take place right before the evaluation, it should be year long. Right, the whole year of, of looking at my performance. I, I do know that um, some of the documents, they're not quite done yet. So I don't know, and, and I also know this, Robin, when is our meeting in July? I don't have it in the top management.
They haven't even given like, like, why September one either? It's just like, you're trying to ask questions, it's very like.
September one is intentional because if you are evaluated over a school year, then it's September one until your evaluation cycle. So they didn't want people to wait until January and say, now we're encompassing the whole year. So that, the September one is to make sure when the school year starts, everybody's trained to do it. That's why Ann's working so hard to get our staff, uh, our teachers and our administrators trained before.
I would think to you, Dr. Vanderjeck, before you're trained, before you're, before we have to use a new tool on you, you should have seen it for at least a fair amount of time so that you know what you're being evaluated on. If it changes, then you're, most places you know it a year in advance. I think that's fair to, to you, if they're changing something and you don't necessarily know about it.
Yeah, I, I, I will say, if everybody's here in the July work session and I can schedule it and it takes an hour, that's probably a different conversation. But to Barb's point, if two or three people are missing and then, and now you're not involved in the dialogue, that would happen, so.
It's July eleventh, um, for our regular board.
And um. We normally don't have a work session before.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm, I mean, if we do it before September, I'm not hung up on that. I think, I think you addressed the major thing that was in my mind about the evaluation, so thank you for that. And if it's like, well, let's just try and get it, I'm, I'm not opposed to that. I'd get to be, either say there's two people that aren't going to do the next evaluation or we redo it again in January or February or something, so. But um, and if we're all here and we, I'm, I'm, I don't have strong feelings on that part, but.
Would it be helpful if I tried to look at our August work session? To see if everybody is planning on being here since at least six times seven? I don't know, I know, I don't know what vacations look like in August and July, but.
School back in session.
Okay, it's June for me, but.
But if we do it in August and it's an hour, I, I guess I'd like to find, I, I don't think.
I guess how long is it going to be? Because our August workshops are usually pretty busy, aren't they?
They, they usually are, but I will say that over the past several months, we've put a lot into work sessions. But I think we're in a, a different spot than I would say the past few years going into this one. We're going to have a busy board meeting in August because Ann's going to hire people, right?
Yeah.
So, but, but if I could find out the like, like, if it's an hour, then maybe reasonable to put in a work session. Find out who could all be here, when we have four, maybe we say, no, we're just going to roll the dice, we'll do it in September, October.
I would say we need to have at least five or six for the financial aspect of it. If we're going to pay that much money, would you guys agree? I mean, let's be.
Well, we'll get a better feel for, if you look at your schedules, we'll send something out this week. We have time, I'll try to find out how long. There is a, one of the N A S B staff members out of Allegan coming that I've heard can do this. The reason Ottawa didn't reach out to N A S B is because the superintendents in Ottawa said, we don't want to run this through the, through the ISB. We want to do it, we're, those that are doing it are doing it on their own and most of them are not.
When is our work session in August?
We don't have our dates set yet, um, because we wrote on that, you and I.
The traditional.
Tell you the tentative date.
Twenty-sixth, twenty-third, yeah.
Yeah, twenty-sixth.
What, what, that gives me no kind of.
Yeah, why don't we do that though?
Okay, we'll stay in the kind of technical.
Yeah.
All right, that had nothing to do with policy, but that was part of the superintendent evaluation.
It linked right to it.
It did, so any questions on the, and we had to have a conversation. So any questions on the policy oftentimes? I know, keep in mind, I'll still bring this, we'll bring this to as a first reading. If you have questions between now and then, please reach out after then, uh, still, and then we'll have some. And then policy number twenty-four-ten and twenty-four-fourteen are kind of tied together. The language, number one, twenty-four-ten is dropped. Twenty-four, twenty-four-fourteen, um, simply uh, changes the conversation about uh, what you legally can and cannot have a conversation uh, with kids. You can see that's kind of tweaked.
So just getting back to twenty-four-ten.
Yes.
It says at the bottom, legal, is, so are you saying that it's a legal reason why we had to remove that?
Uh, legal reason was like, it wasn't initially there, that should be stricken too. So it was there for legal purposes, it's no longer there because it's no longer required.
The law has changed.
The law's changed.
But do we have a choice if we still want to restrict referrals? I guess is what I'm saying.
I think it would be, um, I don't know if it would be in our best interest to discipline somebody for making a referral when we don't have a legal stance to do it.
No, this is.
Did I say that right?
My understanding is right, this is prohibiting us from a referral.
It was.
Previous one.
Previous level.
And, and I'm just trying to put this in context with what's happened federally, as, as well as what's happened in the state. And is that all connected here? Is it, um, I, I guess I'm trying to, trying to put all those pieces together. Because if in the past, we had this policy based on current law and now we're removing it because of current law, that makes sense to me. But if we're removing it because it doesn't match with something else, I want to know what it doesn't match with.
It's your first, it's removing it because it's no longer current law.
Okay.
And this was instituted because it became a law in twenty nineteen eighteen? Eighteen or nineteen?
Gotcha, and this is Michigan law, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and there's no obligation to inform parents?
There, there still is, it's just what it, it's on the second page.
I saw that, I saw that as far as reproductive health.
Yeah.
I didn't see it will figure out to, or making recommendations or motion.
We, we have, uh, in the past, you, it was illegal to do it, we have no, uh, that's still a conversation that the council would have with a parent. It depends on the situation. Yep. Twenty-four-fourteen, you can see the change is based on the same. Twenty-four-eighteen, uh, same thing, but it's the very last sentence that's stricken from that. Thirty-two-twenty, uh, there's a typo, number four on page nine on your.
I, I can look it up myself, but I think it would be helpful for the legal annotation for all the board members to see what that is.
On the bottom?
Yeah, so the, the three-eighty-fifteen, the three-eighty-one-sixty-nine, the three-eighty-eight-seventeen-sixty-six. Um, because that, everybody probably knows how to look those up. But at least for me, it would be helpful to look at that, to wrap my mind around that. Because to me, that's, this, this seems like a really big change, but I know we've also had a lot of changes in Michigan law. So just to see the connection would be helpful for me.
You're asking for, you're asking for the law reference that makes this change necessary?
Yes.
Yes.
I, I struggle.
Don't we have it?
Not, not that it will change anything, but.
Exactly. It's easier to make a connection when the question's asked.
It's, I think it's in, no, we can definitely get that. I'm, I'm looking past Ann, sorry, to Robin. We have it in the legal documentation before we meet with Neola, go through from there. So I just want to, that reference, that might clarify not only the law changes, but the necessity to change these policies.
Yes.
Does that make sense?
Yes, exactly.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And that, and that's all three of those policies. They all get that, so. Uh, thirty-two-twenty, uh, it's a typo on a number four and I think it's C four on the top page. You can see that minor thing. Same with uh, sixty-three-twenty, it's just a language cleanup. I'm, I'm not trying to do these too quick, but they're just language cleanup. Uh, sixty-three-twenty-one, same thing as is sixty-three-twenty-five. I was going to give you a prize if you could find the language, the typo in sixty-three-twenty-five. It's hard to find, it's, it's under uh, B two, the last paragraph, which would be on uh, page twenty of your handout. The word that is certain. All that for, yeah. Um, sixty-three-fifty, it's a prevailing, prevailing language, prevailing wage language. I will, um, Pat Briggs has a new title, is the prevailing wage coordinator. I, I wondered if that was going to be you, Mr. Briggs.
You getting a pay raise for that?
Yep, it's on his LinkedIn profile, that's for sure. It all varies, right, with construction, it could, it could involve your, your construction manager. I mean, there's different people that will be the prevailing wage coordinator, make sure that's on.
Last, last time, before they get rid of the prevailing wage law, they moved the responsibility over to the district head to do it. It's forever, we didn't do it. We just had the, the C M. We also, we had to report, so we had to learn how to pull the report from the department later.
Look, look at unfunded mandate.
With the payroll deduction on sixty-five-twenty, um, that is not, that's something that's bargainable. However, we, our policy didn't even allow, so even if they bargained to do it, we had a policy that didn't allow it. So we had to update the policy. So now, it is an allowable deduction, um, if it's negotiated that way. So that changes to sixty, sixty-five-twenty. And then eight, eight-hundred is the ceremonies, observances. A lot of this stems from the coach that was uh, either fired or tried to out in Seattle, I think it was. Maybe uh, Bremerton, uh, Washington, that they held the prayer after a football game and they said the coach was organizing it, therefore it was a major deal. Um, this goes to um, the fact that um, students have the rights to organize and do events and hold events, whether it's a prayer to the flag, whether it's a moment of silence, whether it's something that takes place, um, that's due to organize. That doesn't mean staff can't either to monitor for student safety, uh, but students still have the right to organize um, and have religious expression. I don't know, and we do it now, so.
Dr. Vanderjeck.
Yes.
It really doesn't state the um, the whole authority of it, so we can look it up and.
Okay, I'll get with Ann and figure out, not this Ann, definitely, and get to the language. Make sure we get to the board before the first reading.
Thank you.
Yep. Any questions on policies?
Any questions on policies? All right, moving on to trip requests.
The band's, the band has lofty goals to go to state finals uh, next year in Detroit. And I a hundred percent am looking forward to that. So, uh, it's a request for overnight trip for the band to go. Quite frankly, they do this every year, but they're, you just don't know what time they're going to perform. If they have a three o'clock performance, they probably won't. But last couple of years, they've had a, you know, eight AM or a seven forty-five, an early morning and they go the night before. So we can see all that, but this is a request for them to go.
Any questions on the trip requests?
For Mr. Vanderweil, I was always on top of it, any requests?
Well, well, it varies. That wasn't the case.
There was a time which.
Before my time.
Yeah. Believe me.
You would have had him said that.
He was talking to competition several times.
We almost stopped him from going.
And I've gotten him really early.
He's learned. He almost learned the hard way.
Yeah. All right, next up is board goals. So in your attachment, we had a thing on board goals. And at the top, I just thought it might be helpful just to put responsibility of school boards in the state of Michigan. And then I did receive um, feedback from four people. Um, everyone's feedback is important and valued. And um, a couple of the things for board goals, we do already, like, we do the code of conduct. We, we do this every year. I, I guess we could make it a board goal, but it's something that we already do. So I don't know if it necessarily needs to be a board goal. But the general support, and I had the opportunity to talk to, Andrew called me as well. And Andrew sent me an, an email today and I, I have to look it up. He wanted me to say something, I'm sorry, it's, I work all day. I think he sent it to. Give me just a second here, sorry, I should be more prepared.
Did he send it to everyone? Okay, so everyone saw it then, huh?
Just change one word.
Yeah, I think he, yeah.
I think his intention was to make sure for you that's not that he doesn't want to create goals. But he felt that if the majority of the board members have decided not to, he didn't really want to spend time and effort at that point to detail something, you know?
What I think is important is that the, that all board members have individual goals. I think that's really important. Now, Dr. Vanderjeck, one of the questions I had was, just because we were talking about cost for the self-keeping superintendent evaluation training, is there a budget for board member training? Because if we all start attending classes and they're ninety-nine dollars here, ninety-nine dollars there, we all start attending a bunch of stuff, what's that going to do to the budget?
So the answer is yes, there is a budget for the board.
Okay.
The answer is, uh, I would not, we are not to the point of saying to the board, slow down. Any opportunities you have to grow professionally, we are able to support.
Okay.
Uh, there have been conversations about, whether it's a state conference, whether it's an annual conference. I think collectively as a board, we'd like to support any ideas that we may have. Within, within reason that I think the board would also say within reason for it. If somebody uh, wants to take forty classes this year, knowing that you're probably going to move to, out of the state a year later, that's probably not the idea. But um, but if there are, if there are ways the board is like, yep, I'd like to continue this or other conversations around collectively, then the answer is yes, there's a budget in place. There, there's a lot of grant dollars available that we'd use for the board for training for that ninety, those ninety-nine dollar classes. Some of them, they're two hundred dollar classes and ninety-nine is covered by a grant. So we, 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 we put our toes in the water, but we have, we're plenty of resources.
So I, I certainly would encourage all board members to look at, at what they can do to have some individual goals. I also think, Ken, having all newly elected board members complete to see the one hundred, one hundred classes. I also think, Ken, having all new elected board members complete the CVA one hundred classes should be an expectation for all new board members. Nick, did you have anything to add?
No, I mean, when I, I had submitted a couple of thoughts, a couple of months ago, and again, I found the one hundred little class is helpful. So I think that should be an expectation, whether it's, I think that's the word Andrew used when I was talking to him, expectation, goal, whatever semantics. Um, and I think, Don, you had mentioned before in the past, you've attended some conferences, found them somewhat helpful, perhaps.
Yeah.
Um, again, whether that's a goal or an expectation, I don't know, but I think it doesn't have to, it shouldn't be all seven, but if we set up some type of a rotation, or something like that, where some of us go, report back to the rest of the crew at a work session, or a board meeting, what we learned. Um, I think that's something we could look to do too. Could be on board for that.
Any other comments?
I, I, history is a great teacher. Um, and because this was begun back in September as a follow-up to some of the SOAR data we had, and because I was in the particular group that was looking at a lot of the staff surveys, um, I was probably the one who initiated it. Um, I would like to read from the approved minutes from September eighteen, that said, "The board discussed setting goals for the board. It was suggested to develop goals for the board's code of conduct that is signed annually. The board will discuss items one to five in the code of conduct at their next work session, and the rest of the items at their future work sessions. From those discussion, goals will be determined." And then on April eleventh, we approved the minutes from our March twenty-five work session, shortly after we'd had the board's self-assessment. And that says in part, "It was determined that each board member would consider goals and submit their suggestions to Dr. Cooper. At the next work session, the board will decide two or three goals to set."
Like I said, we do have a couple, review code of conduct, educate for new members of the board to complete the one hundred series CVA classes. Those are, if, if you wanna make those board goals, we certainly can. Um, Ken, you had put down, "The board will complete the M A S P administrator's self-assessment," we've done that. If, if, if you wanna do those as board goals, we could. Um, the code of conduct is something we've done every year that I've been on the board.
Is how, I guess it comes down to like, how formal do we wanna make this? Because I asked like, some other board members I know in other districts, they're like, we don't have goals, there's like kind of unwritten expectations of what you should do, but like in terms of, every year we vote, like, no, you get your code of conduct, you get your strategic plan. That's, that's your goals and everything should drive, so it's just.
And the code of conduct is our expectation that we have set for ourselves. Um, the piece that's missing, that, again, this is not something I'm gonna beat over the head. I just know that there was an expectation that we provided, um, and I think somewhat rightly so, that we would look at, um, ongoing relationships between staff and the board. And without any goal, you're not gonna have anything to reach for, other than something very nebulous. And if that's what the majority of the board wants, then that's what they want. I, I just, um, I want to be true to what we had previously said when it seemed more important at that point in time. And I don't want it to be perceived that that is no longer important, because we have not established any goals around that particular issue.
So I think it still remains very important, and as I have asked for Dr. Vanderjeet, different things that the board can attend to, and he has provided us stuff, and board members have been actively going out. So I think we have been doing some things. Um, again, like Nick said, it's how formal do we wanna be? I have seven other boards, I just, it is not something that is, I would say, normal to have board goals. Um, I don't think, and I don't know, I know Mark's been on the board a long time, Ken's been on the board a long time, and you had said, you know, in the past, we haven't had board goals. I, I do think it's very important that individuals have goals.
Yeah, I had a couple of thoughts. So, um, a couple of years ago, and it was informal, after the formality, but a couple of years ago, um, we talked, kind of set up a, an informal board goal, board goal of, uh, making, having, having a, an onboarding, um, uh, not.
Manual?
Manual, thank you. Um, that was something we said we wanted to do, and, um, um, now that largely fell on me as president, but nonetheless, it was something that was important to the, to the, that I felt was important to the board, so we set it up and implemented it. Now, it wasn't a, to my recollection, a firmly written down goal, um, could've been, but I don't remember. So there's that. I think that, to me, again, whether you're a person, or a board, or a classroom, or a church committee, or whatever, there, um, the process of self-reflection as an entity, again, a person or a board, whatever, and then, um, the thinking of continuous improvement, how we can get better, how we can do better, and then setting up goals to say, we wanna be better, um, is, is, I think, important. I think that has value. I think that as a district, we're on a journey. Um, twenty years ago, we didn't have a strategic plan, um, we didn't have superintendent goals, we didn't have a lot of things. So to me, um, comparing ourselves to other boards, either that we have sat on, or in other districts, is not the right comparison. To me, it's, what do we think we need as a board to continually get better and better and better, um, so that we can lead the district more effectively? And, um, some of those go, I mean, I just, I jotted a bunch down, some of those may be, well, let's take credit for some things that we've already done, you know? Because, hey, take the small wins, you know, when you're on the journey, take the small wins, and awesome, we can tell the community, we have done some things like this, this and this. And then let's set some things for the future, uh, that we can, we can, um, we can target and we can work toward. Some of those things may be about, um, the relationships, um, with teachers, with, um, staff, principals, or whatever, and we fold some of those in. I think, you know, I didn't really, um, go there, I think, in the, at least in the goals that I jotted down. But, um, again, my point is, um, no matter what entity you are, a person, a board, a committee, a church, a class, or whatever, self-reflection, continuous improvement, and saying, how do we get better? How do I get better? So I agree with you, Dr. Hooper, that self-reflection as a, as a personal goal, and how can I get better? Um, I just happen to believe that this board is at a point in our journey of growth, that setting up some, some goals, let's say, well, we strive for this as well, as a board, to help us lead the district better, is important. Now, as Andrew said, and as I mentioned, if the board, if the majority of the board was like, no, it's, we're not gonna do that, it's not, well, we'll do personal expectations, and we'll kind of continue on that, then, so yeah, as our code of context says, we have a discussion. We, um, discuss and debate the discussion, the discussion, and if the majority says, no, we're not gonna go forward, then so be it. Then it's not a hill I'm gonna die on. Those are my strong personal feelings, but that's, that's, we're on that on this stuff.
Mark and Greg, if I haven't heard any of that, how many can go?
Well, respectfully, I, I think that, um, I'd like to take what Ken just said and said, if, if the consensus isn't there from the board, it's not a hill to die on. I don't think the consensus is here from the board. I'm one of them that doesn't believe it's, it's necessary, and I, and that doesn't mean that I don't do any self-reflection, or look at, from meeting to meeting, from subject to subject, um, from every, you know, um, meeting that I have with people, that I don't try to do the best that I possibly can. But I'm not an advocate for, um, us having any more goals. And I'd really like to put it to rest, one way or another, tonight, so we don't have to talk about it anymore. I wanna, I wanna work on making the district better, and I think we've been doing better as a, as a, uh, the team. I, I do think the things that you said about the one hundred classes are very good, and I'm incorporating that, have taken a couple of them, and take a couple more. So I appreciate that also, and I'm, I'm done talking about it.
Yeah, I, I think I've said all I, I wanted to say about it. If, 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 if the board had a, a, a clear and measurable goal they wanted to, to go on, I, I'm, I'm okay with that. But apart, I think it'd be very, very clear and very, very measurable. I, I think we can become a part of that sort of strategic plan.
Okay. All right. And I would encourage everyone to develop some personal goals, and, uh, moving forward. All right. Why don't we go ahead and do a roundtable?
I'm all set. Stay dry. Depends how long we're here. Just writing now, that's.
Ken?
Yes, I do.
We brought it.
Um.
I, well, I'm sorry, I do have to repeat. We're still working on collecting the SWISS data, which you requested, we're still working on making sure we get it the right way and quality data. Let's still note that that's something.
Okay. Um, so a couple of things to add, so the, um, the PLC discussion tonight, thank you, Andy and Kathy's here. Um, but, but again, pushing the district forward, continuous improvement, how can we do better? I mean, just really important. And tell you too, they had a board briefs last Friday, the, uh, the update on alternative education. Again, all these are pushing, finding opportunities and developing, um, opportunities so all kids can succeed and achieve their best. So thanking to the, to the team for what you've done in that area, it, I can just, continue to push forward. Um, some, you know, littler stuff, it's not little, it's, um, it's not day-to-day, I'll just say it. The, um, work of the Auto County Road Commission. Um, and important, um, the data would say one thing, this is, this is one where, you know, the data isn't a thing that's gonna drive it, right? You know?
Well, so the, the conversation with the Auto County Road Commission was that, that data does not support a traffic light.
Yeah.
Well, that's because we don't allow students to cross there.
Right, exactly.
And it's almost like, you know what, don't do this during school, before or after. Do this on a Friday night at about six PM before a seven PM football game, and tell me how many kids are going across the street.
Yeah.
We have nearly six hundred kids that live in the subdivision across the street that we transport to and from school, because we don't want them crossing the street. That's one measure, but we don't transport those kids on a Sunday afternoon to go use Georgetown's playground. Or they wanna go get ice cream at the corner, or they, I mean, those are, those are variables out there. So we're working with them, and we'll tell you, the highlight of it was they did not deny the request, they tabled it, which I was fully expecting a denial. Um, I went in there and thought, oh, but it was worth the try. So, yeah.
What data are they looking at?
So we asked them to do a study on the corner of Fortieth and Baldwin.
Right.
And if you go over to that intersection, there are curb cuts in the sidewalk that looks like there should be a crosswalk right there. And so, they said, we, um, we will study it before school and after school with the volume of kids crossing. They did the same thing at Thirty-Sixth and Baldwin, and there were a handful of kids that crossed. And the reason why is because we bus all those kids across the street. Not that we're not going to continue, but at any point, if we said we have to be done with some of these bus routes, because we don't have enough bus drivers, it makes the most sense, you're right across the street from your school. That's the data they refer to right there. They did a one-day study for about ninety minutes in the morning and ninety minutes in the afternoon, which is warranted. Um, I, I draw a parallel to a year ago, we did a traffic study at Thirty-second and the high school exit. And they wanted to do it on the Friday before Memorial Day, because it worked into their schedule. We don't have school on the Friday before Memorial, so, so we got, then they wanted to do it, you know, we'll do it right afterwards. And meanwhile, we just graduated five hundred seniors, so the parking lot's not half empty, but, so there's all those variables, and so that's what they're.
One commissioner spoke to me, said they were thinking about a tunnel, is that true?
So in, in Zeeland, they have a tunnel that they built. The water table is different over in Zeeland. They had to raise the road, and then they put a tunnel, and it is a great idea, and it's, I, it's perfect.
Yeah.
Um, but, it, the water table's different, there's a pond just to the south of that, south west, southeast of that corner, there's a pond. So the water table looks different. Um, there is a lot of clay over there, which changes it, the road would have to be raised. You go from a traffic light that's about ninety-five thousand to several million dollars, and we are not paying for a tunnel.
When Roxanne was here, she tried to get this speed limit lowered, and had no success in doing that. I can understand, it's a fifty-five mile an hour speed limit.
They don't plan on changing this speed limit.
Which I don't understand at all.
It's a five-lane road, I don't think they can change the speed limit on a five-lane road. However, to your point, Mr. Davis, we are putting up traffic. There's a whole nother issue with that, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to take all this time off, but there's a whole nother issue with that location of the school, because you can put your speed zone sign within a thousand feet of the school. If you come down Fortieth and you turn, I would say, east on Baldwin, you don't even see the school zone sign, because it's on the other side of the intersection. So we're gonna put, we wanna put another one, they said, well, you can't put it too close, and so we're, we're having those discussions also. Not just one that says speed zone, but one that flashes red and blue, the three colors? I should know that. No, but that flashes the right colors, that basically say, you know, check your speed, check it now. Uh, and we're gonna put those up. We're doing it right now at Forest Grove and Bauer. It, it could be the five, six building. We're trying it out before we buy nine of, there's a total of nine based on how they're located. We wanna put four of them up now, and then we'll put more up at Baldwin. But that's, that's on top of the traffic light. That, that's not in lieu of the traffic light.
And to your point.
Sorry.
No, this is why I wanted to bring, and to your point about, um, the speed limit, because it's a five, that's dictated by the state now.
Yeah.
I did see there's some legislation being talked about to give local communities more control over setting speed limits. Because I, I agree with you, Mr. Davis, that, that fifty-five down that road is, is crazy.
And fifty-five is still a suggestion, those college kids do that.
But they're gonna die faster than that. Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Well, and on top of this, so just to add insult to injury, Forty-eighth is being tore up along, pretty much all along Forty-eighth, from, um, from Van Durin. I think I pointed right away, Van Durin all the way down, so Unity is gonna be amassed, and Mr. Groth knows that. Um, and it's a three-year project, more water. So as it comes down, the, the suggested route is to go to Van Durin to Thirty-Sixth, Thirty-Sixth to Baldwin and back up. No offense, I'm not going to Thirty-Sixth, I go to Forty, which means I'm gonna go to Fortieth, then I'm gonna go to Baldwin, and I'm gonna try to turn left to go up to Forty-eighth to go to Graham Alley. If I'm turning left there, it's gonna be a long back up. And I, I get that part, but, so we, we want, we're trying to do it similarly.
So, so my point, keep, please, I know it's a, keep fighting.
Oh, I'm not done.
I'm not. And since you mentioned Unity, that was my last comment, was, um, also thank you for maintaining that relationship with Unity and Hudson Christian in the way that you and the staff do. It's, um, you're our artists, um, we contribute, they're our artists as well, so thank you for, for your work in the end. That's it.
Graduation, that's like Thursday.
Yes.
I mean, how exciting that we're to this point, where we can have it at our place.
Are you all going to make it? I know Mr. Duett's out of town. Do you all know where to go?
Where? Want us to meet in what time is it?
So graduation starts at six. I honestly would be there no later than five-thirty. Um, I will send you, I will ask Mr. Patrolia to send you a location of where is a good place to park. There are advantages and disadvantages to a good place to park. The advantage is, it's a good place to park. The disadvantage is, you're not getting out anytime soon after graduation. Supposed to be a beautiful night, uh, the graduates start, uh, they, they congregate in the aux gym, they march down to be into the field house, there's overflow in the auditorium, um, it's gonna be a, it's gonna be a great night. So please leave them by five-thirty. Uh, I think we're all meeting in what we consider the hospitality room there, but I'll check with Mr. Bill to make sure.
It's on the lower level.
It's on the lower level.
Yeah, there's a separate door entry.
You can park down below, you can come in there and go there, we'll make sure that you have, you know where to go and get the access to us.
And they're having someone basically be in a crossing guard as well, correct?
We've got, we, we, our administrative team, they've been asked to be there.
Okay.
Some have conflicts, um, because, like, maybe some of them have graduates in other districts, or, or they have nieces and nephews that might be graduating, but all of our, they've been assigned different areas, we have crossing, we have golf carts to bring senior citizens, we have special handicap entrance. Um, it's gonna be a beautiful night, so unfortunately, um, the initial plans, everybody lines up at the main entrance to get in, which people will start lining up probably around three-thirty or so. Doors open at five. Open there.
Say, I live just down the street, so I'll be crossing the street, so I'm hoping that someone will be there safely. So you're welcome to park in my driveway if you want.
Because I'm gonna park at my grandma's next door.
There you go, yeah. That's, it's just very exciting, and I know it's a long time coming, but it's just gonna be special.
Yeah.
And, uh, thanks to all the staff that's putting in extra work, being the first time here at our place. It's just exciting.
Been a journey for six years to say, we wanna be able to graduate this building.
Through COVID, through all of it, so kudos to everybody who had a part in it, which is everyone on staff. And that's it.
I'm good.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to graduation as well, and honors nights. How many students, was it two hundred, a hundred, two hundred overall? Yeah, I'm looking forward to graduation as well, and honors nights, how many students, was it two hundred, a hundred, two hundred over a four-point oh?
Over two, no, almost a hundred, and a four, over a four-point oh, but over a two-hundred that were recognized in some capacity.
Incredible.
Yeah.
Incredible, great, great job, everyone.
I'm looking forward to being able to see for the first time in sixty years, and because of that, I will not be at the graduation, cause my second eye has been operated on Thursday, so. Also, I wanna say to Ken and Don, um I appreciate the um, the worth that you put into the, the goals, and I, I'm not dismissive of that at all. I just didn't feel like it would be something that I wanna spend a lot of time concentrating on, but thank you very much for being an advocate for what you, what you believe in.
And nor do I, nor am I applying, Greg, that you're not self-reflected, and you're working to do, I'm not applying.
Yeah, and I didn't say that, I want you to know, I respect that. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Petro.
Okay. I just wanna continue to advocate that the governor and legislature continue um to, we're advocating they fund community colleges and higher ed from the general fund, and not from the state uh school aid fund. It's uh, the number is getting up right under a billion dollars, and uh getting growth, we just, that, that's was a part of the, the, the promise and proposal, eh, that the school aid fund would be for K-12, so that's, continue to, we appreciate all of you, continue to advocate for that. Thank you.
All right, I want the motion for adjournment. Motion from Nick?
I'll support that.
Support from Mark, all in favor, just say aye.
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 We need to adjourn.